Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 5th, 2023 Mason Special Counsel Meeting. I'm so excited that we have so many people in the audience today. It tells me that everyone is very interested in the future of the Western Southern Open. Before we get started, I just want to say that my, I think I can speak on behalf of my colleagues here that we are so very grateful for the leadership and expertise that we have from our city staff. They have worked very hard as they continue to navigate through this process. So I just want to recognize our city manager, Eric Hansen, our assistant city manager, Jennifer Heft, our law director, Jeff Forbes, our counsel clerk, Lisa R., and our city engineer Kurt Seiler. And in the audience somewhere is our economic development director, Michelle Blair. They have all worked so very, very hard. So I just want to say thank you to them very, very much. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order and I am going to ask Lisa to call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Chance.
Here.
Councilmember Bradburn.
Present.
Councilmember Hackey.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Stricula. Mayor Space.
Here. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to thank council members for making this meeting. It obviously isn't our typical meeting schedule or meeting time. So are grateful that you're able to make it to this. Also want to introduce maybe a little bit of background. I think everyone's aware, last August, BMOC Capital secured the sanction for the Western Southern Tennis Tournament. And it's been our pleasure to have worked with the chief operating officer for BMOC, Ford Perry, since that time, who has been very, he's just been a gentleman in leading us and helping us look at ways and pursue options for maintaining the legacy of tennis here in the city of Mason. He's also a very kind man, and that is why he is joining us via Zoom today when he discovered, well, maybe I'll leave it to him to say, he didn't take a flight after he took a test. And I think that's reflective of the kindness of the man, a little bit unfortunate for us here to miss him, but he is joining us via Zoom. I'm hoping from his facial expressions, he can hear me. That looks like right now, let's test and see if we can hear you, Ford. Ford Perry, Chief Operating Officer for BMOC Capital.
Great, thanks, Eric. Appreciate the introduction. I assume you guys can hear me, okay?
Yeah.
Great. Well, good morning to everyone. As Eric said, I'm Ford Perry. I'm the chief operating officer for BMOC. BMOC is a diversified family office based in Charleston, South Carolina that was founded by Ben and Kelly Navarro. And as Eric said, I'm truly sorry for not being there in person. I had every intention of doing so. Unfortunately, I tested positive for COVID last night. But it was wise not to expose everyone. Frankly, I didn't think COVID was much of a risk anymore, but I guess here we are. Just as a matter for presentation, Eric, do you guys have the presentation on the screen there? Or do you want me to share from my end?
Is it easier Ford shares from his side or that we pull it up? We're checking with our partners at ICRC. They're the folks that handle the streaming and the cable playback.
Great.
Would you like him to share it? Yeah, Ford, I think you go ahead and share.
All right, let's see if we can do that. Can you see that?
Eric, can you see it, Ford?
You can?
Great. Yes, we can.
Let's see if we can go to... Great, okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for hosting and look forward to this opportunity to talk in more detail about the tournament and the work that we've been doing to date. And frankly, just to remind people about what this opportunity is. As you know, nine months ago, we invested several hundred million dollars to acquire the rights to the Western and Southern Open, one of the premier tennis tournaments in the world. And at that time, and since that time, we have been evaluating the opportunities and the challenges to elevating the tournament to a level that is consistent with its peer tournaments around the world. Mason and the Cincinnati region have been incredible long-term home for the tournament. And we have a tremendous amount of respect for the support the community has provided for the tournament. My goal today is to highlight for everyone some of the elements of the tournament you may not know or may have forgotten that speak to the tremendous opportunity this tournament and the campus in Mason can provide to the community. As I said, in September of 2022, we acquired the Western and Southern Open from the USTA. And as you know, it's a tournament that's played every August. What was particularly compelling about this acquisition to us is its presence within the tennis world. It is considered one of the nine most coveted trophies in all of tennis. And as a result of that, it perennially attracts all of the best players in the world. It has what we consider to be the best date on the calendar, leading up to the US Open. Well, the best date on the tennis calendar because it leads up to the US Open. And because of that, you attract the best players. And because you attract the best players, we attract an incredible group of fans as well. Each year, we sell tickets to fans from all 50 states, from 39 countries. We have an incredible global audience on TV. In fact, Europe is our largest viewership audience amongst the continents. In fact, it's 70% greater last year than the North America. And so the international appeal of tennis is tremendous. And we think there's a great opportunity to grow this tournament into something even more significant than it is today. As a reminder, for those who may not be as familiar as others about the tennis landscape, most people are familiar with the Grand Slams, the Australian, the French, the US Open in Wimbledon. In fact, the French Open is being played as we speak. Just below that is a tier of tournaments called Master 1000s. And so they are just nearly as prestigious as the Grand Slams for players to win. There are five of those Master 1000 events that are combined men's and women's events. That includes the Western and Southern Open, the others being Indian Wells and outside of LA, the Miami Open, the Italian Open in Rome, and the Madrid Open. And as you look at the others that are amongst the ATP events that are men's only, there are other prestigious cities like Montreal and Toronto, Monte Carlo, Paris, Shanghai. So this sets the table for an understanding, I think, for what the relevance, both in the tennis community and the sporting world is for this tournament and why we are so excited about what the opportunity for this tournament will be. As important as it has been historically and as important as it will be this year, it will become increasingly important over the next several years. The governing bodies within tennis, both men's and women's governing bodies, ATP and the WTA, are working together to change some of the dynamics and to really put additional emphasis on these Master 1000 events, the largest events they have, and really de-emphasize some of the smaller events. There's more than 100 events played annually around the world that are considered high-level professional events. So amongst these nine, there's a plan to both expand the field and expand the duration of these Master 1000 events. So today, or in fact, in August, we'll host an event that's a week long. We'll have qualifying on Saturday and Sunday. We'll have a main draw Monday through Friday, and then we have championship weekend, which works great. And we get tremendous support from the local community. But it's a relatively brief one-week tournament. In 2025, there's pretty substantial change coming to the tournament. At that time, the tournament will expand from one week to two weeks and from a 56-player draw field to a 96-player draw field. So in essence, the tournament's doubling in size and duration. What that provides to us is a couple of meaningful things. Qualifying is Monday and Tuesday of the first week. And then we have 10 days of really top-tier play during the first week and a half of the tournament. That includes a middle weekend, in which all of your top seeds are playing. And so that's sort of the premiere moment within, in the tournament prior to championship weekend and creates really exposure for the tournament and for the players. A unique duration of the event that both allows them more rest between events, but allows fans a longer period of time to come and experience all of what the tournament has and what the region, the Cincinnati region and the Mason area have for the tournament itself. And then we finish with championship weekend, which is always obviously the highlight. As we look at what that presents, we've really studied several other peer tournaments in the market to understand what the potential for the Western and Southern Open can be once we go to expansion. There are two tournaments in the US, Indian Wells and Miami, who have already expanded to two-week events. And those tournaments respectively attract between 500,000 and 390,000 fans. And they talk about an economic impact within those communities between 565 million and $390 million. There are several, there are two other tournaments, the Italian Open in Rome and the Madrid Open that are expanding or have expanded this year to two-week events. And then the Western and Southern Open will come in 2025. And so when we look at that opportunity and what the ability with investment can be, we get really excited about the potential for the tournament. Beyond the tournament, we believe that the campus in Mason has the potential to be much more than just a site for two weeks of professional tennis. And we've spent many months with our architects and with our professionals in the tennis world thinking about what that campus could be beyond just the days of the tournament. And we expect it to be very much a sports tourism catalyst, as well as an opportunity to engage and activate the campus for the broader community. So beyond the Masters 1000 event, we would expect to host lower-level professional ATP and WTA tournaments. We host many of those here in Charleston today, where we have another smaller but similar campus. We would want to compete for collegiate championships, whether those are conference championships or NCAA championships, or even just local colleges using this as their home base to play their matches. We would also want to expand the growth of our LTP Tennis Academy, which is the basis for our tennis sort of teaching, whether it's youth, adult, high-performance amateur, or even professional development that we have based here in Charleston. And all of that would lend itself to hosting amateur tournaments, junior tournaments within the region and becoming a destination for tennis players around the area. And then beyond that, outside of racket sports, I didn't mention pickleball. The growth of pickleball is tremendous. We would look to have significant facilities. We already host some pickleball championships on campus. We would look to expand that. But outside of racket sports, we would want the campus to be both a cultural center for concerts and festivals, as well as direct community use. The way we operate our campus in Charleston today is that we have, that any resident of the county has access to our facility. And we provide that in partnership with the city in terms of making it both affordable and accessible. We want tennis to be open to anyone in the community who wants to play. And we want to create programs that attract those who wouldn't typically be exposed to the sport. Our LTP acronym stands for Live, Love, Learn to Play. And we think tennis really serves as an incredible tool to teach broader life skills. And so we look at that as an important use of this campus as we move forward. For those who don't know who BMOC is and what our experience is, the good news is we feel highly confident about our ability to execute on these plans. We have, as I've mentioned a couple of times, a significant campus in Charleston where we operate a WTA 500 tournament. In fact, last year, it was awarded the tournament of the year, which is a worldwide award for the WTA 500 level. We also went through a substantial renovation to that campus. The image of that here and what the stadium looked like before in the lower-left corner. And it has become an incredible venue for concerts. We started our concert season several weeks ago. Had two nights of Dave Matthews Band this weekend, Friday and Saturday. I might attribute my COVID test to that, I suspect. But nevertheless, it was an incredible event for the community and it's become a center point for gathering and community and personal engagement, which is tremendous. We'll host, last year, we hosted, I believe, 23 concerts. And this year, we're slated to be around 20. Last year, we were ranked the number 10 amphitheater worldwide for, by poll star for our concert series in the amphitheater segment. So excited about the potential to create something similar in Mason. As we've gone through this process post-acquisition, and as Eric referenced, we've been working closely with the city on this. And one of the things we have to determine is, one, what's required to elevate the campus. Unfortunately, there are a lot of gaps and deficiencies in the campus relative to what's required for the expansion of the tournament in 2025. And there's gaps and deficiencies with respect to expanding this campus into something that reflects all of the sort of objectives that I just outlined about making this a year-round facility. So we've spent the last nine months with architects, with contractors, digging deeply and both creating a master plan for the facility, pricing that, and starting to make some decisions and conduct evaluations about what makes sense and how we would go about executing on that. At a very high level, just kind of rough numbers, we believe that sort of critical improvements for 2025, which many are listed here, it includes court expansion. We need at least 30 courts on campus, in addition to 10 match courts, nine that are typical play, plus one as backup. We would need to look to expand both the existing buildings out there, the south building and the Paul Florrie building, as well as to construct significantly more player facilities, locker rooms, physio, massage, gym space. All of that is undersized relative to a doubling of the size of the tournament in 2025. And remember, when we double the size of the tournament, it's, we're doubling men, we're doubling women, and we're nearly doubling doubles as well. So it's a lot more players and support stuff. We need green space, desperately need green space on the campus, making it a more attractive place for fans to be, to deal with the heat, with both shading and both natural tree shading, as well as manufactured shading that we would build. So this looks at sort of what we think the cost to get to sort of a minimum level of improvements for 2025. And then tiering from there, what we've identified as additional opportunities, you know, activating the campus year-round with indoor courts for our, both for public play as well as for our academy, building up pickleball, which is in tremendous demand within the community. And then sort of a full-scale master plan, which is really upgrading our VIP and hospitality spaces, putting a permanent kitchen and commissary. Today, we have to build a temporary kitchen during the tournament, trying to convert center court for concerts, adding better entry and traffic control into the campus, expanding our merchandise opportunity, and just overall repairing a lot of aged infrastructure on the campus. And so this sort of shows a number of different opportunities that we have, and we continue to evaluate. What that translates into, and I'll share with the group, some of the master planning that we've done and some of the renderings that we've shared with Eric and his team. Still lots to figure out, but these are some studies that we've conducted. This gives you a sense for what both the existing campuses in the lower-right, as well as our master plan for the overall campus. The most obvious changes that you'll see is the addition of courts to get us up to that 30. There are, in addition to that, indoor courts, a player building, pickleball up in the north side, as well as a better food court experience, shading canopies along each of the courts, a central fan plaza, et cetera. And so these are all elements we're evaluating. We've also started to have conversations with the city about how we would build additional shared infrastructure on sort of the northwest side of this campus. This drawing takes some liberties with regard to sort of the expansion of the campus out to the east and west and north and south sides. But we have started to talk about how we would incorporate additional facilities that would be dual-purpose shared facilities, both for tennis and our year-round activity, as well as for the city, whether it's for golf and other sports activities, as well as comfort space and the like. And I know that Eric and team will speak to that. Some additional renderings, just to show what some facelifts could look like. This is a new entry plaza on the main area and sort of reskining the box office, as well as what we believe is both important in terms of a central fan plaza gathering space that importantly would provide shading as well as rain protection. There's not many places to sort of escape the heat during the current tournament. This is just outside the main stadium over to the left-hand side, where there's a current fan plaza that's fairly open. Likewise, providing shading and rain protection within the F&amp;B Plaza and thinking about how to redesign that for patrons. In addition to reimagining the VIP spaces around the campus, this is just one example of some redesign work that we've imagined for what are currently called the bunker suites, which are on the backside of the stadium. But there's three or four other areas within the campus where we've envisioned significant upgrades. This is another example of a standalone suite outside to be able to continue to attract not just local fans, but the international corporate dynamic that is a core part of this tournament and a core part of the peer tournaments and having a space that is truly premium for people to come. We'd still, you know, one of the benefits of this tournament is that it is, provides accessibility to the average fan as well to be on campus. And so we intend to invest both in the premium spaces, as well as the general, the general campus as well, like I said, whether it's food and beverage space or otherwise. This is a glimpse into the player building. You know, we want players, they love to come to this tournament, but we want them to be happy when they're here. Having a space to train and warm up while they're here with that expanded player field is important to us. And having a player building that can accommodate that, but also accommodate our academy year-round. And then finally, thinking about our pickleball, what we call pickleball social, so a space that can engage people sort of year-round as it relates to the expansion of pickleball. So that's a glimpse into the space, hopefully some helpful, helpful insight into how we think about the tournament opportunity and where we are contemplating broader investment. So with that, that's the end of my formal comments. I'm happy to turn it back over to Eric for next steps.
Thank you, Ford. I think that was helpful for many here. Did want to acknowledge the mayor's comments that were very gracious, but this effort to keep tennis here has been a regional cast. And we have several, you probably can't see them, but there are many of those partners in the room. There is what's been called a working group that's been put together that consists of leaders from throughout the region that have been active in exploring how to speak with one voice to secure both the future of tennis, as well as the additional investment here. And I'll fail if I try and list folks, but just by eyesight here, we have local business leaders, we have elected officials, our partners at Sinclair, Tennis for Charity has several representatives here, obviously Warren County Deerfield Township. I think folks from the airport are here. We have numerous stakeholders that are here and have been interested in this and that have been engaged with the city in securing this investment. Two folks that have been, I call them quarterbacking this effort on behalf of the region, is Kim Lauderbach, who is the president of Ready, and Gary Lindgren, who is the president of the Cincinnati Business Committee. I think what we'd like to do now is turn it over to those two.
Good morning. Thanks for having us here today. You're used to seeing me here talking about Ready, either investment or private sector, bringing private sector jobs to the region. So this is a little bit of a different hat, but one that I'm happy to wear, particularly as a Warren County and Mason resident. So it's nice to see all of you. Gary will come up here and join me. Certainly want to acknowledge our friends in the audience. To your point, a really invested group of regional players with the Chamber, our visit, Cincy, Sinclair, Warren County CBB, Warren County itself. Shout out to my friend Seth, who is here on the inaugural day of the British Airways Flight Direct Service lands at CVG tonight. So just a great way to highlight the international reach of the city. So just briefly, you know, what brings Ready to the table? It's really, again, not something that we typically spend our time with, but when we think about the economic impact, the current tournament at about $80 million, certainly the expanded tournament at upwards of $150 million projected economic impact. For us, that international attraction piece makes it so much better for what we do for a living, right? Getting those eyeballs here into the area, as I mentioned, highlighted by that British Airways flight and our direct flight to Paris. So with that, I just thank you for being here and allowing, you know, our organizations to jump in and really help to lead this effort as well. We appreciate the partnership and we're excited to see the vision that Ford is laying out here with us today. Gary.
Thanks, Kim. And as Kim and I are both Warren County residents, I think we recognize how valuable this has been to the community in Mason and appreciate you partnering with us on this effort. As Kim mentioned, I think, you know, between Mason, Warren County, Sinclair, the state of Ohio, Tennis for Charity, there's a lot of really important stakeholders that have come to the table to try to make sure that this event stays in the region. We've been really successful over the years when we've had these types of collaborative partnerships. I point our colleague Brendan Call at the Chamber, who they've really been leading for about a decade, the effort around the Brent Simmons Bridge that just recently got funded, things like the MLK Interchange, bringing Southwest Airlines here to Cincinnati. I think those kind of regional collaborative efforts are really important. And this is another opportunity to do the same here. We know this is a tennis community, not just because of this event, but there's a lot of grassroots support in the community. Have great facilities like Harper's Point, Five Seasons, that do a really good job. Pickleball, as you all know, is kind of supercharged in the area. I think there's over 60 venues. And having run the capital process in Hamilton County for the last 10 to 15 years, I'll say that the number one request we get from communities is for pickleball courts. So there's a great grassroots tennis community here. So thanks for having us. We're glad to be part of this and appreciate all the support.
Hey, here at the city of Mason, we have been very fortunate that we have such tremendous support from our state leaders and not only on this project, but many other projects that we've had in the past. So right now, I would like to introduce our Ohio representative, Adam Matthews, and Ohio Senator Steve Wilson. I think you both maybe want to come up to the podium and say a few words. We really appreciate all that you have done on this project and supporting it and getting the support from the state level.
Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us on the call. Thank you, counsel, for being here. And it's great to see so many of the same faces we've been seeing for months, working so hard to continue the tradition of excellence of tennis here in Warren County and in southwest Ohio. I really appreciate Senator Wilson. I really appreciate the Senator Senator Wilson here, who has helped set up meetings here and at the Linder Center as well as up in Columbus. Thank you for Ready Cincinnati, the Chamber and others. And with the support that we've had from your council, from mayors, from everywhere in the region, we've been able to get the the attention of our statewide office holders. The lieutenant governor came to tour the facility here after speaking with many of our leaders for Warren County. The House budget, we were able to get twenty-two and a half million dollars to help offset some of this investment that will make it a year-round activation, a wonderful staple and continue to be that anchor here in Warren County that shows us off to the rest of the country and really the rest of the world, as we heard from the the airport. I'm excited to see what's coming along with the Senate, but thank you so much. We know what works here in Warren County and being able to promote that, protect that in Columbus, especially whether it's on the the tennis court or elsewhere, has been a true blessing, and thank you for being part of that that solution. And here's Senator Wilson.
Thank you and good morning. What a wonderful, wonderful asset we have here in Ohio, in Warren County, in Mason. I'm going to talk about commitment because we are in a dogfight, apparently, with other venues with Charlotte. My allergies were kicking up a little bit this morning, and I thought, wow, have allergies here, but you know, it's nothing like in Charlotte. I want to talk about the soft side for a moment before I talk about commitments. The soft side is the history. This is a tennis community. I remember, old enough to remember, going to Coney Island for the Western Open, watching them play with wood rackets, watching Roscoe Tanner beat people with his wood racket. And that tradition has continued and continued and continued. And as the ATP grew and as this venue grew, we took the young players into our homes. We loaned them our cars. This is a tennis community. And Mr. Ford, I would say, you're going to have to build that in Charlotte. The other thing I would say is that we've walked the walk. We aren't just talking the talk. We have a proven track record. We don't have to go out and build something new in an area that is fraught with environmental concerns. We have a we have a commitment from not only governments like Charlotte does, but from citizens. From citizens that love tennis. We want you here. And so the big question is, what are the contributions going to be? How are we going to knock down the roadblocks? How are we going to be sure that we keep this tournament here? Well, I have the ability today, after being in meetings where the administration made their commitments that they're going to do what's necessary. And after the House put in their budget twenty-two and a half million, and now you wonder what's the Senate gonna do? And I'm gonna tell you, and it's amazing that I'm allowed to tell you because the Senate budget doesn't come out till tomorrow. So I'm gonna tell you some things that the president of the Senate has allowed me to tell you they're going to be in that budget. It's an operating budget, and what's not going to be in that budget is the twenty-five million in the operating budget, but guess what's going to be in that budget? A new super capital budget that will secure not twenty-two five, but the twenty-five million and will also have well over a billion dollars that be can be called on for projects like this projects. If there are roadblocks, if there are things that need to be done, it can be asked for in that super capital budget, not having to wait for the full capital budget next year. Now, I know, Mr. Ford, that these are words. But the Senate president has made a commitment. He'll jump in a plane this afternoon or tomorrow or any day, and he'll go down and see Mr. Navarro. They they were able to build quite a relationship, not just in tennis, but I think a lot around education. They talked for a long time. He'll sit down face to face and look him in the eye and say, your twenty-five million is going to be in that new capital budget, and there's going to be money in that capital budget that can be asked for if other things come up, if there are other needs. The commitment is there for the administration. The commitment is there from the House. The commitment is there from the Senate. We want you here. We're gonna keep you here.
Thank you very much, Senator Wilson and Representative Matthews. We're very excited about that. And with that, we want to show you what our commitment is here at the city of Mason and Mason City Council, and we have an ordinance. It's twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five that we would like to, I would like to have read. I need a motion to read by title only. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five, authorizing the city manager to execute an economic participation agreement in the amount of fifteen million dollars and authorizing certain economic development incentives to retain the Western and Southern Tennis Open in Mason.
Thank you, Jeff. Jennifer.
Yes, Mayor, members of council. I'm just going to provide a little history to give everybody a little background that may not know it, but as everybody said here in this room this today, there's been a lot of work on this throughout our organization at all levels of our organization, as well as Warren County, and you've heard the state. Everybody's attention is on this project. It is our top priority. But with that, a little background, last year, the Mason outlined a proposal to BMAC Capital Group that enclosed included the building blocks and investment that to formalize Mason's invitation for continued collaboration toward a shared vision for one of the highest-profile corridors in our community. That proposal included a direct commitment of fifteen million dollars along with the idea of developing scenarios like shared fitness objectives and supporting property development that aligned with Mason's mission for a culture of wellness. Work on tennis and work with BMAC continued throughout twenty twenty-two, which led to letters that were presented by the Mason and Warren County that outlined our local pledge for shared commitment to the state of Ohio. Projects of this magnitude were no stranger to it. The state of Ohio, Warren County, as well as Mason have a proven track record for building public and private partnerships, driving economic development within the state of Ohio and our community. With that, I invite Ms. Michelle Blair, the city's economic director and CEO of Mason Support Authority, to our podium this today to share Mason's position as well as our creativity for this project. With that, Ms. Blair.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, council, it's good to see you in the morning. Good morning. Also, Ford, thank you for your presentation today, as well as our our regional partners looking out there in the crowd. That's it's very fulfilling to see everyone. Senator Wilson, Representative Matthews. Really, as we do the work regionally, working with Ready Cincinnati, we do represent three states, a pretty unique position to be in. And I think the impact of this tournament is felt felt in all three of those states as well as the entire state of Ohio. So it's my pleasure to be able to talk to you today. And I think as we've felt in in the presentations up until now, this isn't just a business transaction for us. This is this is a sentimental partnership, a friendship, as it were, that we've developed over forty-four years. This is the forty-fourth year the tournament will be in the city. We really consider the tournament to be our first startup, and the city of Mason has a very strong corporate portfolio, but over the last decade, we've also expanded our work into entrepreneurial activity and really growing innovation through scaling startups, and tennis has really become that. There was so much love that went into bringing that tournament here and and growing it up with the support and the backdrop of the entire community because a startup just doesn't do it on its own. So we have a lot of pride and joy when we talk about tennis. I'm going to run you through a couple of business slides. So when those make it up there on the screen, I know council has them. So for the good of the group and the community, I think just a high a few high-level metrics, as we started our work with BMAC in the fall. As Ford pointed out, we aspired to meet their their metric of one-third support of the public fairly robustly over the past few months, I think we've accomplished quite a bit, and this is this is our check the box of one-third funding as it as it stands today when we had an original one hundred and fifty million investment that our target stood. So you can see the state of Ohio, Warren County, the city of Mason, all came together and met that one-third commitment. The tournament also has some immediate property needs. The city is involved in that along with Tennis for Charity, who is here with us today, a longtime partner, and Sinclair, who also is here with us today, a longtime part longtime partner and friend. So I think this is a good, hopefully, representation of, you know, what we've accomplished so far, and it has been a lot of work. I think we want, though, to, you know, speak to, and it's all coming together as we look at the rest of the presentation that was shown today, that we continue to identify resources as a community, as government entities, and as a regional business community, we know we need to compete at the highest level, and our message to to BMAC and and everyone in the community today is to say that we we are committed to be that full one-third partner as we identify what the potential of this opportunity could be for all of Ohio, all of the Midwest, really. So I think if we can go to the next slide. I want to talk a little bit about economic impact. We've talked about that Ford showed in his slide that you know, we've about two hundred and fifty thousand people that come to the tournament every year. That's the size of two Super Bowls over the course of ten days, really seven to ten days. The expanded tournament presents a really interesting, exciting opportunity. The city of Mason commissioned a study from UC Economics Center to help us understand those metrics. And in conjunction with our partners, we've we recently received these these figures. So we assumed we knew that the numbers were coming in higher as BMAC has shared with us. So we assumed that three hundred million in the study, sixteen hundred new jobs, two hundred and seven point two, I see up there, million in a regional impact. So when we talk about those three states, you know, the players from all over the world that come here really impact our region in a big way. Kim pointed out that the the two-week tournament itself is about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy, and we'll continue to sharpen those metrics as as we evaluate what that looks like. We think we haven't actually even covered all of the information that we could in here in terms of, you know, players, player coaching teams, others. So this is this is, I think, a really good stepping stone as we look at our economic commitment, and you can see the you can see the rest there. This is a hundred and fifty percent increase from where we are today. That's a pretty nice economic increase. Okay, next slide. This is really just for perspective. This is the southwest Ohio's I seventy-one Innovation Corridor. That white color corridor starts in Cincinnati, goes to Cleveland. From an economic development perspective, we call this the precision personalized medicine corridor. So much innovation happens in healthcare, in innovation, in life science along this corridor. Mason's front door here, it's about a thousand acres from the eastern National Scenic River to the west. And I think that's just helpful as we look at what this campus location is and then how we can lean on the scalability opportunities of this location. Ford mentioned, as as he talked us through what their proposal looked like, a partnership for shared facilities and joint operations with the city of Mason. We obviously have a very important legacy asset in the community just to the west, which is our Grizzly Golf Course and Social Lodge. And this is an opportunity for us to iterate with BMAC and look at how we can elevate the development of this campus and the asset that the city of Mason has that's important to the community. And for us to to marry the proposal that that BMAC put up there, we know together and have had many calls that this is an important part of the iterative process. How do we? How do we explore joint operations? This is not something that's new to the city of Mason. We have successful models, including the campus that we sit on today with the school, the Aquatic Center, the Indoor Aquatic Center, the Community Center. So we're in taking on this process, you can see our west, the west side of this map here on the white buildings are some of the concept versions of some of what you saw BMAC present and some of the things that are important to the operation that we run, as well as looking at things that could really enhance the innovation that happens here in P three business opportunities. We think in in conversations with BMAC, and I know with the governor's office in the state of Ohio, that if we do this, we want it to be transformational, and this is part of our process. Next slide, please. This gives you a view, and this is a little different from the slide that you saw with Ford, which showed the north entrance. This is the entrance that is on the west side of the campus on the golf course side. Certainly, I think as we do successful economic development here, visuals are really important to that process to help us better understand what are the opportunities and how can we make some of those things happen? So this is this is that view, and I want to make sure I check my note I had. One thing I wanted to make sure I said here with this one. You know, I think the other piece that is important, there there are additional square footage opportunities here that could help us not only elevate golf and tennis, but really make sure that we capture economic development opportunity as well. So again, I think this is the picture of what potentially we could do in a transformational process together. Next slide, please. You've seen this one. This is important for us. This is this is a great opportunity, again, to have everybody that I've worked with my entire career really be rowing in the same direction. We want tennis here. And we look forward to the continued creative process with the opportunity. I think that we are are absolutely good at being nimble, responsive, and you know, can do things in a way that allow business decisions to be made in the timelines that sometimes they drive. Next slide. With that, we have a tennis tournament coming up, and I don't have the exact day count. I think some in the audience probably can share that, but yes, hopefully, we will all see everyone here in the audience at tennis this year, and thank you, BMAC. I'll take questions.
Mayor, members of council before you tonight or today, I keep saying tonight, I think it's Monday evening. Is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five, which does formalize Mason's commitment to this project with a direct contribution of fifteen million. I also want to point out within that ordinance, it broadly identifies other economic development tools that further our initiative for this project. Many of the tools are already within the wheelhouse, and Michelle's very custom, Michelle and her team are very custom to use using those tools to solidify a project of this magnitude. However, we also committed that within this ordinance are some very creative as well as some broad concepts that will allow us to remain flexible while leveraging our and align aligning the city's assets. Asset, well, I can't talk, cities' assets to facilitate BMAC's vision for our community. Thank everybody for their attention and their attendance tonight. With that, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-five is recommended for adoption.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And with that, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Removed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I need a motion to adopt.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any council discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, I can start. Well, thank you for everybody showing up today. This is obviously special and near and dear to the city, but it's also very near and dear to me. Chief Wells could probably remember, I started out when I was six years old, they would wake, my mom and dad would wake me up at six AM, and for fundraising effort or something, we'd have to go clean the tennis tournament. So we would go and sweep in between all the seats from like six AM till like eight or nine AM, but then we'd get to meet all the players. And as a six-year-old, eight-year-old, ten-year-old, that was extremely special. And so, you know, and my dad was a tennis instructor in the Air Force, so I grew up playing tennis, and we used to go over, sneak on center court, you know, obviously, I felt extremely special then as well. So, you know, for we've heard a lot of 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 the buzzwords of of the commitment and collaboration, but I don't, I think we have proven that that's something that we don't take lightly here and that we are willing to go above and beyond. I always advocate for our economic development team here and our staff, and we absolutely, I I feel extremely blessed, as State Rep. Matthews said, to be on this team and work on this team because it is our goal and it is our commitment to keep tennis here in Mason, and we look forward to working through all of that and doing just that. So thank you. Thank you, guys, for showing up. Thank you for your time. I know there's a lot of people that traveled to get here, so appreciate all of you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. You know, aside from the financial aspect of it, which is the, you know, two-hundred-and-seven-point-two-million-dollar regional impact that Michelle had talked about, the fifty-four-point-six-million dollars of earning per year within our region, which is really important. You know, there's also something that you don't often think about, which is the volunteers. It's very difficult to get people to volunteer for things, and this particular tournament takes a lot of volunteer work. There is over a hundred-and-eighty-thousand fans that attend on an annual basis, and we have over five-hundred volunteers that help. We've already established the volunteer base, so we are very proud of that, and we think that will be very beneficial to you. I'd also just quickly like to thank, you know, our our state reps, our county reps, and of course, local here with all the staff that's really worked hard. We pride ourselves in working together as a state at all different levels to make businesses successful, and we will do everything we can to make sure that tennis is successful. So just wanted to say thank you, and I hope to see you in the in the future with your tennis tournament here in Mason.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. First off, Mr. Perry, thank you for not being here today. No, honestly, thank you for being on the call. We're we're very excited to be working with you and your folks at BMOC. I also want to echo the mayor's comments regarding staff. They have worked tirelessly throughout this effort for a long time now, so want to make sure that we recognize them and all the hard work that they've done. We appreciate it very much. Representative Matthews, Senator Wilson, thank you for all of your support. We appreciate you being here, and thank you very much for for championing this up at the state level. I would like to thank the folks at CVG as well. My wife is from England, so we're very excited to have British Airways doing a nonstop flight from here, just on a personal level. So thanks, thanks for bringing that in. We appreciate it. But no, I'm very excited to be supporting this. Yeah, I started off as a young guy playing tennis, then I discovered the joys of racquetball. The two are mutually exclusive, so I don't play tennis anymore, but I love tennis. I love going to the matches. It's one of the one of the reasons that Mason is the community it is, one of the reasons we chose to move here twenty-one years ago. So very excited about the possibilities and very, very much looking forward to keeping you guys around. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Grossman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming in today. And Mr. Perry, we thank you for joining us, although virtually. It would have been a pleasure to meet you in person, but we hope to be able to do that again soon. Thank you very much. As I listened to all the commentary and and reviewed the presentations, some of the comments of Senator Wilson just really struck me when he talked about the long history, and and others have mentioned it too today, and it's certainly woven in our presentations for decades, over four decades of experience, proven experience, and that we talk a lot about three P, P-three partnerships, and the three Ps came to mind, one Senator Wilson used proven. And because we have proven for over four decades in our culture, in our regional culture, this family heirloom of the tennis tournament, you can see that we are prepared, that's my next P, we are prepared for this new iteration of the Western and Southern Tennis Tournament to come to Mason, to stay in Mason, and to be revitalized in a way that fits your vision. And we are prepared to be excellent partners. That's my third P. You have all of the right partnerships here from Ready Cincinnati, the Cincinnati Businesses, community, the Cincinnati Business Community, Jobs Ohio, our our airport, we're nestled halfway between two great airports, but of course, CVG is our favorite. Just want to point that out. We have such a culture here to embrace, and we've built over four decades of equity that simply cannot be replaced in Charlotte. And I thought about initially when we were comparing Little Old Mason in the Cincinnati market to beautiful Charlotte. It is a beautiful city, and it almost seems like a David and Goliath situation, a competition where we just have this small pebble to offer, but it's really so much more than that. And when King David was chosen as king, it was because of his heart, and it was because of his years of service as a shepherd boy, and then he ended up knocking this giant down with a little pebble. And I believe very strongly that Mason and the the experiences we've had through public-private partnerships, through our regional partnerships in our community, our five-hundred annual volunteers, and all of the equity that we've built over the decades gives us the right heart. We have the heart and the proven experience that shows we're prepared to be the right partners for you to stay in Mason and impact the region of Cincinnati and Warren County and Hamilton County in a way that will just be amazing and and puts us in the honored position of being good stewards over taxpayer funds to invest in this opportunity. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Mayor, if I may, I think we heard in today's presentation a word sometimes called roadblocks, but I think today we have a collaboration of people, businesses, government, they're going to take those roadblocks and blow them up and continue to have the tennis tournament here in southwestern Ohio and the City of Mason. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And with that, I don't want to repeat a lot of what what has already been said because I totally agree with all of what our council members' comments have been, but I I especially want to emphasize, I'm just so proud of our proven track record that we have in establishing the public-private partnerships, which was referred to as the P-three. We have done that with so many of our local businesses, our county leaders, our state leaders, you know, in with with Red Eye, and now hopefully with BMOC Capital Group. So I'm really excited that hopefully we can create a vision and a partnership that's not going to only enhance the culture of wellness that we're very proud of here within the City of Mason, but throughout the Cincinnati region and throughout the whole entire state of Ohio. I mean, I think everyone probably can tell, we're all very excited about the possibilities. We're very excited to see what's going to happen in the next couple of months, and we're very appreciative that all of you are here in support of all of these ideas. So with that, I just want to say thank you again to everyone who has worked on this project. I know I'm leaving some people out, but I want to say thank you, Ford and and BMOC, and also to our state leaders, our county leaders, Red Eye Cincinnati, the Cincinnati Business Community, our city staff, Sinclair, everyone that has been involved. There's been so many people working very hard on this. So with that, I'm just going to ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Bradburn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey.
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman.
Yes.
Mayor Spade.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all very much. And with that, Ford, we hope you get to feeling better real soon, and hopefully we'll see you in town soon. So with that, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much for being here today.
Thank you, Ford.